The public hearing will come to order for House File 583. Welcome, everyone. A couple of housekeeping things. Push the button to turn on the microphone. The little button looks like the top half of a human being. It turns green when it is on. Make sure you speak into the microphone. Please state your name and who you're with when you start to speak. You will have two minutes of speaking time. Someone at the end of the table, Amanda here, will hold up a yellow sheet of paper that says 15 seconds remaining, and they'll hold up red to stop. You will need to stop, in the interest of fairness for everyone, you will need to stop when your time is up. Turn off the microphone when you're done, please, same button that you turned it on with, and leave the room when you are done speaking. Lot of passion on this issue, but again, good order and discipline need to be maintained so everyone has the opportunity to have their voices heard. Anyone that does disrupt the proceedings will be escorted from the room. We will be going back and forth, pro-con, pro-con, to be just as fair as we can be. And with that, we will go with the first speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Holt, members of the committee. My name is Ryan Benn. I'm with the family leader, and we are in support of the bill. In 2007, Iowa joined a minority of states when we made gender identity a protected characteristic in our civil rights code. The results of that decision have been dreadful. Clearly, there are circumstances when it is necessary and right to differentiate between a real woman and a man masquerading as a woman. It's common sense. A man has no place in a bathroom or locker room with my wife or my daughters. A woman in prison shouldn't be forced to share a cell with a biological male, and taxpayers shouldn't be forced to pay for so-called gender transition surgeries. There are good reasons for our laws to protect women and children, and we shouldn't force business owners, employers, or state agencies to implement policies that disregard the reality of biological sex. This bill, the Sex and Gender Clarity Act, doesn't discriminate against any group of people. It simply removes a single characteristic, gender identity, that has resulted in women's and girls' private spaces being violated, a single characteristic that is not objectively definable, it's not immutable, it's not a fundamental right, and does not fit alongside other fundamental protections in code like race, religion, and sex. Let's make Iowa the first state to correct course. It's time to come back to our census, and it is right and good for our laws to recognize the real difference between men and women. We thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Vee Fixmo Ariz. My pronouns are they/them, and I'm a Johnson County resident. I'm the proud parent of two young children and just celebrated 20 years with my wife last week. I'm a former Fulbright scholar and an alum of the University of Iowa with a master's in urban and regional planning. I'm also a Johnson County supervisor, and I have faced my fair share of discrimination as a trans Iowan. Like each of you, I was elected by the people of Iowa. I swore to care for the health, safety, and welfare of those who live in one of the most populous counties in our state. Never would I have imagined standing before you in opposition to a bill designed to remove civil rights protections for a group of people, my people, who regularly experience discrimination based on gender identity. By striking gender identity from the State Civil Rights Act, you are condoning inequality and discrimination in housing, education, and employment. Is it not the role of government to affirm rather than to deny law-abiding citizens their inalienable rights? What of our state motto, "Our liberties we prize, our rights we will maintain"? The people of Iowa deserve better. You have heard outrageous arguments to support this bill, including that this will somehow protect women and girls. This is a red herring, and a dangerous one at that. Women, girls, and trans people are all under attack in this state, and true gender equality is made real when we all have access to equal pay, childcare support, healthcare, education, bodily autonomy, and yes, as a mere baseline, civil rights protections under the law. As an elected official, I have been in your shoes. You have to weigh the information you have with what you know in your heart. How many of you know a transgender person? Maybe we just haven't met yet. I have found that when choosing between humanity and cruelty, it's an easy decision for good people who want to do the right thing. Please vote to strike this down. Show the type of leadership that protects everyone in our state, because transgender rights are human rights.
Thank you. Go ahead.
My name is Catherine Keeter, and today I'm speaking as a private citizen in support of this bill. I am a woman that is an adult, human female. I'm a wife and a mother. In the past few years, Iowa has made great strides in protecting women's sports and women's private spaces, and I am so proud of the work that has been done. But if gender identity is left in the civil rights code, those protections can be taken away. Historically, the civil rights code protects constitutionally protected rights and immutable characteristics. Gender identity is not an immutable characteristic, as was pointed out by Justice Samuel Alito in December during oral arguments in United States versus Skermetti. Having gender identity in the civil rights code directly contradicts the civil rights given to sex, specifically women. You can't tell women their spaces and rights will be protected and then in the same breath allow men counterfeiting as women to invade those spaces. The radical gender ideology movement continues to rip away the things that make women unique, and cowardice corporations and government officials have bowed the knee to this ideology for years with the collateral damage being women. If anyone in society is being erased, it is me, a woman, a mother. Radical gender ideology advocates have hijacked women's sports, invaded private spaces of women. They have degraded mothers by referring to us as pregnant persons, birthing persons, and breastfeeding as chestfeeding. The governor of Wisconsin has gone so far to call us inseminated persons, talk about insulting and dehumanizing. Terminology matters, and it is time to end these disrespectful practices. I have carried my babies in my womb. I have birthed my babies. I have breastfed my babies. I have known the love and loss of motherhood. A man, no matter how much makeup he wears, or how many hormones he takes, or how he will mutilate his body, will ever be a woman, nor will he ever understand what it means to be a woman or a mother. Please stand for the women and the mothers of this state and not allow us to continue to be erased. Thank you for having the courage to bring forward and vote for this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Good morning. Devin Kelly. I'm a civil rights attorney here in Des Moines. I represent probably one of the few attorneys in the state who deal with the Civil Rights Act on a daily basis. I also represent quite a few women who are themselves victims of violence in the workplace. I currently represent a gentleman by the name of, I refer to him as Steven. He is a trans man in a rural community. Steven applied to fill a much-needed job in his community where he was going to drive individuals with disabilities to certain appointments when they were not able to drive themselves. Steven applied for the job, was told there was lots of openings in that position. However, somehow during the application process, it was learned that Steven is trans. And in case you're wondering, if Steven walked into this room, he would look like the majority of the men sitting around this table. Steven called to check up on his application, at which point the hiring manager then referred to him as Julie and asked, "Is this Julie?", and the position is no longer available. Now, Steven is smart and had his non-trans friends call, and once again, the positions were open. This is the type of thing that gender identity in the civil rights code protects. It protects people working hard across the state in rural communities, some of which you might not even know, but are just trying to make a life for themselves and their families and serve their communities. I respectfully request that you oppose the legislation.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Steve Rowland. I'm in full support of this bill. Thomas Jefferson is credited for saying the purpose of government is to enable the people of a nation to live in safety and happiness. I sincerely doubt anyone here disagrees with this fundamental concept. Our disagreements will be found in the interpretations and applications of its definitions. Codes are co-related. Bills are debated. Laws are established. Laws are built from a place of fact, not feelings, not personal desires, preferences, or abilities. If laws were established using these, then who's to say the nine-year-old who drives the family truck around the farm shouldn't be allowed to drive on the highway? Lady Justice is who. She's blindfolded, using equal weights and measures without personal bias. The law is built from an objective platform, not an abstract canvas. When our civil rights code changed in 2007 to include and acknowledge gender, transgender people were not protected, they were promoted. Their rights were elevated above everyone else's. The change in the code takes the harm principle from "your rights end where mine begin" to "your rights end!" exclamation point, because mine are more important. HF 583 recalibrates these scales that were held in the hands of Lady Justice and restores equal rights to every Iowan regardless of their sex. I believe this is the tension. I believe this is the heart. In our conversation this week with those in opposition, I heard gender is fluid and sex is even more complicated. I disagree with this because I see no other example in nature where another mammal can change their sex. However, I do genuinely find their position fascinating and especially telling. Telling, because if their definition for sex and gender is, as they say, "hard to define", we should not be surprised with their reactions to this proposed code change. Their reaction is actually very understandable, just not justifiable or defendable. This change, just like those that came before it and after, are built from a fixed definition, not a fluid one. This change that came before is a fixed definition. It would not be wise to build our house on the slippery slope of the sand using fluid definitions and feelings. Instead, let's courageously build it on the tested, immovable foundations of fixed definitions and historical truth. Thank you.
Thank you. Hold on just a minute. What I'm gonna do, just to make sure we can all hear, is when the door's open, I'm just gonna pause things so that, because I'm having trouble hearing when the doors open. So, we're just gonna pause it when the door opens for a moment, if that's all right? Okay, perfect. All right. Okay. So, we're not opening the door this time. Okay, go ahead.
Good morning. Thank you for having this hearing, and I'm really grateful for the opportunity to be here. My name is Katie Emborick. I'm a family physician. I'm asking you to vote no on HF 583. I'm an Iowa-educated and trained family medicine physician. I lead a team of healthcare professionals who have cared for over 2,000 transgender and non-binary Iowans. We see folks from every corner of the state, from districts you represent. I have patients from Cothus County, Guthrie Center, Humboldt, and even Sioux County. We have patients here today, right outside this room, screaming at the top of their lungs as if their life depends upon it, because it does. As a doctor, I see firsthand how social determinants like stable housing, employment, and access to public spaces are critical to my patients' health. The protections in our civil rights code are not abstract, they are lifelines. When a person is denied housing because of their gender identity, they face higher risks of homelessness, violence, and worsened physical and mental health. When they are fired from a job or turned away from a business, it affects their ability to afford medications, access healthcare, and live with dignity. This bill is not about protecting the rights of women, but it is about taking away protections from an already marginalized group of people. The removal of civil rights from a population that already suffers from disparate health outcomes is a public health concern, and it will have real consequences for real people, real Iowans. Representative Holt has made it clear that the end game is to remove Medicaid coverage for evidence-based and medically necessary gender-affirming care for adults. He has pointed to the $2 million Medicaid has paid over the last 10 years for this care. The problem with that math is that trans and non-binary people will still be here, despite your attempts to erase them. Only now, they will have worsened health outcomes, more chronic disease, more hospitalizations, and more costs to the system, to the taxpayers for whom you are purporting to be saving money. Please vote no.
Thank you. Hold on just a moment. Go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Anita Fisher, and I am from Pella, Iowa, and I am registering in favor of this bill through Protect My Innocence, and also I am a member of our county's Republican Central Committee, who are also in favor of this bill. As you may have heard, the city of Pella was outraged when a 15-year-old girl went topless at the local pool because she identified as a male. Citizens were outraged about this form of gender expression and called out to their city council for help. After conversations with the city attorney, the city council publicly stated that they would not take any further action as the gender identity law would lead to litigation. Two weeks later, on a Saturday after the initial occurrence, an adult couple from Des Moines area attended the pool. The man wore a bikini bottom with an extremely poorly-covered scrotum, and the woman wore a bottom but was topless with tape covering her nipples. Several concerns were expressed by pool lifeguards ages 15 through 22. A supervisor resigned from the pool after being employed there for approximately 30 years. Younger concession workers quit. Ten employees were told that they would lose their job if they walked out as there are no violations of law, so they resigned. Anyone who resigned from the pool has been red-flagged to prevent them from obtaining any city job in the future. Thousands of dollars of revenue have been lost, as children and families are now enjoying the conveniences of privately-owned pools. These homeowners do not have to cower under gender identity laws. I want to express, too, that these forms of gender expression, public indecency, have been manifested-
Thank you. Time. Thank you so much.
You bet.
Go ahead.
My name is Betsy Monnet, and I'm the bishop of the Episcopal Diocese of Iowa and a spiritual leader of Christian congregations across this state. It is because I am a disciple of Jesus that I am opposed to this bill. Jesus taught His disciples to do unto others as you would have them do to you. The golden rule is common to many faith traditions, and it has a logical corollary: do not do to others as you would not have them do to you. To bring it on home, if you would not want the government to remove your civil rights, do not remove the civil rights of others. Transgender Iowans are members of my congregations and members of communities across the state of Iowa. They are your neighbors and my neighbors. Jesus calls us to love our neighbors as ourselves. It is unthinkable to remove civil rights and legal protections from people that we love. At testimony earlier this week, I heard references to the Book of Genesis. I heard the phrase, "God does not make mistakes." I hope that the Iowa legislature does not rely on the Book of Genesis for scientific facts about gender. Others will have to testify to those facts and to the many scientifically demonstrated variations on gender that exist in humankind. As a spiritual leader, I agree, God does not make mistakes. If God made you cisgender, you are beautifully and wonderfully made. If God made you transgender, you are beautifully and wonderfully made. If God made you gender queer, gender fluid, non-binary, or any variation on gender identity, you are beautifully and wonderfully made. We all deserve to have our rights protected. Please vote against this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Hold on just a moment, sir. All right, so go ahead. Thank you.
Good morning. Support of this bill has been characterized as being unkind-
Sir, could I ask your name before you get started?
Yeah, David Bush.
Thank you.
37-year Iowa resident. Support of this bill has been characterized as being unkind, uncompassionate, and unloving, as well as denying of civil rights. Having read it, I don't see any of that included in the bill. What I do see are common sense protections, especially for women. Back in 2007, when a Democratic trifecta inserted this gender language into our code, most could not have foreseen the ultimate ramifications of the change. Now we do. It means biological men in women's private spaces, including locker rooms. It means biological men competing against women in sports, stealing their awards and chances at scholarships. It means placing business owners under the constant threat of lawsuits if they don't make demanded accommodations. It means taxpayers footing the bill for some gender transitions. Thanks to the breakdown in our families, absentee fathers, readily accessible pornography, and the identity-forming echo chambers of Reddit, Tumblr, and TikTok, our vulnerable children and adolescents are being led into a growing sexual dysphoria that needs our compassion and our guidance, not our accommodation. Misplaced compassion for a small minority has erased the civil rights of women, taxpayers, and businesses who are being forced into accommodation. Ideas have consequences. Bad ideas have victims, and an increasing number of women, children, and business owners are being victimized. Instead of following policies that dehumanize, let's affirm the reality of how people were created. Let's be kind, compassionate, and loving by telling the truth. In doing so, our compassion will also flow to our children, to women, and to those trying to run a business in this great state. Republicans, this is a 70-30 or 80-20 issue in most districts. It's not rocket science, it's not deeply nuanced. It's one plus one equals two legislation. Don't go AWOL when those who elected you to office need you. Vote yes on 242.
Thank you. Go ahead.
My name is Eli Kade. I am a United States veteran and also a concerned Iowan. I adamantly oppose this bill. In 2007, Iowa decided trans people were a protected class under our State Civil Rights Act. So, what's changed? Because trans Iowans existed then, and they will continue to exist after. You are actively dismantling progress that harmed no one. These Iowans you seek to remove protections from are not harmful to anyone. They are not harming women and children, they are not harming them in bathrooms, domestic violence shelters, in locker rooms. They verifiably are not harming anyone. You know who is hurting women and children? The legislators sitting in this room who wish to strip them of their civil rights. This bill will not protect anyone. It does nothing but set a precedent that the state of Iowa is happy to strip away the rights of their own people because a small amount of people have fears. Separate but equal is not inherently anything other than unequal, and to say that it is not is to ignore the teachings of our civil rights leaders of the past. This is not a bill based in logic, this is not a bill based in truth, this is a bill based on your feelings. It is based on your fundamental lack of human decency towards a group of people that make up less than 1% of the country. You mimic those in history who threw a Roman salute. You mimic countries where theocracy rules. I swore an oath to the Constitution because I believe in the democratic ideal set forth by our founding fathers. John 15, verse 12 through 13 tells us, "My command is this: love each other as I have loved you. Greater love has no one than this, to lay down one's life for one's friends." Now, I never got the chance in the court to lay down my life for my friends, but maybe that's because it was here that I was supposed to do this, for these people are my friends. Today, you sit here wanting to strip my civil rights because I'm a transgender man.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Ariella Kraus.
Hold on, just a minute, please. First warning. Sit quietly or be escorted from the room. Thank you. Go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Ariella Kraus. I'm 17 years old, and I am a detransitioner. Many of the people here will tell you that I am the exception, or they will try to convince you that this movement has not used children to meet an agenda. But I am here to challenge those words and provide insight as a former member of this community. The people who conditioned me into believing I was transgender were not just friends looking to help me. They were adults I trusted to guide me in the right direction when I was insecure and suicidal. Instead, I was told I may have been born in the wrong body. Having no knowledge of transgender ideology, I thought they were agreeing that something was wrong with me. What else was, what else is a 10-year-old supposed to think? But that's how it starts. They pick off kids who are insecure and tell them maybe they should change genders. Eventually, my therapist at the time offered to help me get onto testosterone. Not a single notification was made to my parents. In fact, she told me it wasn't worth it to fix my relationship with my parents. In freshman year of high school, I was no longer using the name I had chosen, but I defined myself as gender fluid. I did everything I could to avoid being a straight cis woman, because everywhere you look in the LGBTQ community, it is shunned. After years of self-hatred, and by the grace of God, I was free from what had been my true tormentor for five years, being told that I wasn't born to be enough. I am here today as proof that the abuse has gone too far. I'm here as warning. I am here to say that enough is enough. If what I, as a child, endured does not scare you, then I worry for our state and I worry for our nation. I am not an exception. I am not a show pony for an abusive agenda. I am a woman. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Good morning. Chair Holt.
Vice Chair Lawler. Ranking Member James. And really, all members of the Judiciary Committee. My name is Ed Cranston. I grew up on a dairy farm in rural Jasper County. I went to Iowa State, got my degree there, I got my degree at the University of Iowa. I believe in Iowa values, and I believe in our motto. In our motto, "Our liberties we prize, our rights we will maintain." "Our liberties we prize, and our rights we will maintain." I am here for my grandson. Here's a picture of his grand, of my grandson. He's a 14-year-old, and he's trans. I don't think about him being trans, I think about him as my grandson. I haven't thought about that, being trans, until his rights were being stripped away, not only his rights, but the rights of other students like him, like an entire community. Again, this is my grandson. He is bright, a student, honor band. He has sung the national anthem at large groups and had standing ovations, sustained ovation afterwards. He lives Iowa values. How in heaven's name am I going to justify telling him or just any way of saying, "Your rights are being taken away." Your rights, the rights of other students, the rights of the entire community. This is my grandson. You have children, you have grandchildren. Think about them. If their rights were taken away, would you stand up for them? I think you would. That's what I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you.
And please-
Thank you.
-vote against this bill.
Thank you. Hold on.
Go ahead. Good morning. My name is Aaron Cully. I'm from Cedar Falls, and I'm here in support of this legislation. As I sit here, I feel the weight of attempting to communicate my thoughts regarding this topic in a short amount of time. I desire to do justice to the topic while adhering to my own beliefs and ideally having everyone feel respected. My statement consists of two elements. One, simply an encouragement to the committee, and two, where I think we get our source of identity. To the committee, I believe it's easy for outsiders to look inward and overly simplify issues that exist. I do believe that it's easy to criticize while never getting involved in the minutia of a decision. Today, my simple aim is to encourage you all as you consider your personal beliefs and values, the beliefs and values of those that elected you, your stance on this- and values, the beliefs and values of those that elected you, your stance on this subject, and how you'll vote. You're normal people, as are the rest of us in this room, and struggle would seem normal as you contemplate. My prayers are with you as you consider where you'll draw your line when voting time arrives. Feel the ability to hold your head high and make your decision. There's no need to apologize for the decision you feel confident in. I believe God made man and woman with nothing in between. I believe Scripture is clear regarding this topic, and I believe a land governed in a way that honors Christ is a land that God desires. I believe that humanity must position itself and submission to Christ, and when that happens, things are right between humanity and Christ. I live my personal life in this way, and when given the opportunity, I vote according to that belief. I do believe some people experience great discomfort in the body they were given. I have sympathy and I do desire to understand their experience, not at the compromising of my own belief and where I stand. To the committee, pray discern-
Time.
Search your heart.
Thank you.
My name is Chelsea Miller Bailey. I was born and raised in Des Moines. I am on the Board of One Iowa and previously led the Center of LGBTQI+ Student Success at Iowa State University before laws out of this same state house forced its closure last fall. I am also soon to be married to my partner Rose, who is trans non-binary. Because it seems like it matters, I am also a cisgender woman. I'm here to testify on behalf of my family and communities of color, specifically Black trans women who already are and will be even more disproportionately impacted by the violence that will come if this law is passed. As a lifelong Iowan, I perhaps have a unique perspective on what the rollback of civil rights looks like as a person whose generational lineage had to fight to earn and protect my right to fair and equal access to education, healthcare, facility usage, and more. We've already heard this week that trans folks are dangerous in spaces like bathrooms, and I can think of a time not too long ago where that same rhetoric was said about Black people like me. That we couldn't use bathrooms, locker rooms, access fair healthcare, or own land because of what is also a biological difference. It was wrong in the same way that this bill is wrong. The trans and gender diverse people I know and love are not a medical or a biological anomaly as Republicans would like us to believe. They are educators, doctors, lawyers, small business owners, artists, and more. Even more importantly, they are children, siblings, parents, spouses, friends, and simply humans. Iowans, citizens, they are just like all of us, people who deserve care, understanding, respect, and civil rights against discrimination. The rollback of protecting gender identity as outlined in HF 583 will not protect us, similar to how it didn't protect my ancestors. As they say, "History will repeat itself unless we make an intentional dedicated effort to prevent that from happening." I urge you all to vote no on HF 583 to ensure all Iowans maintain their respect and safety. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Amber Williams with Inspired Life, registered in support. But today, I also speak as a woman and a mother purposely created by God. For generations, women have fought for the right to privacy, security, and the ability to thrive in spaces designed specifically for us. Restrooms, locker rooms, domestic violence shelters, and women's sports exist to protect the unique vulnerabilities of women. This bill ensures that those protections remain intact. Just two weeks ago, in this very building, I walked into the women's restroom and found a man exiting a stall. In that moment, my sense of safety and privacy was taken from me. The restroom was no longer a space for women. It became a place where my rights were disregarded in favor of someone else's subjective identity. This isn't about inclusion, it's about the systematic erasure of women and the denial of the rights we fought so hard to secure. At the heart of this issue is truth, biological truth. There are two sexes, male and female, determined at conception and written into our DNA. No identity change, no policy, no ideology can alter this fundamental reality. Women are not a feeling, a costume, or a state of mind. We are a biological reality. Our differences are not just social constructs, they are deeply rooted in science, from our chromosomes to our bone density, muscle mass, and reproductive systems. These differences matter. They matter when it comes to safety, competition, and the very definition of who we are. To the women in this legislature, stand up for yourselves, for your daughters, for the generations who will come after us. To the men, protect what is rightfully ours. If we are, if we allow the definition of women to be erased, then so are our rights. Our rights are not up for debate. Support this bill, protect dignity, and safeguard our safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
My name is Jennifer Harvey. Twenty-one years an engaged citizen in Iowa, a state I love. I don't know what to say about this Gender Identity Erasure Act. Maybe I should talk about the beauty, creativity, and brilliance of transgender people, Iowa neighbors who offer all of us an expansive view of what it can mean to be our full selves, express my confusion and horror we would try to erase people who are gift. Perhaps I should share, as a parent of a funny, smart, and kind teen, a kid who's only ever been taught that we are each responsible to make this civic body a place where we live the best common good together. I could share what it's like to watch our youth hear public officials actually responsible for the common good, deride them, deny them access to medical care, lie about who they are, and debate if it's good to expose them to more discrimination. I could point out how this bill means all women lose legal recourse if we experience sexism. Do we realize that? No gender identity in the statute means no standing when you're discriminated against as a woman. I can assure you, this woman who used to be a girl is not protected. No women are. Or maybe I should just pull my Reverend Dr. Card. I'm an academic dean at a Christian seminary. I know my theology and my Bible, and I'll tell you what. Given who he was then, if Jesus were here in the Capitol today, Jesus would be trans, and Black, and an immigrant. And I think we all know what the presumed Christian leaders pushing this bill would do to that Jesus. But I'm not going to speak about any of those things. We all know this isn't about reasonable argument, or science, or morality, so I'll just say this. What terrifies me most if this act passes is who we become. A people who pour in to energize hate, feed fear, nourish a spirit of cruelty. Iowans, our destinies are linked, and all of this is about eroding human rights.
Time.
God help us all who don't see what comes next, and stop it now.
Go ahead.
My name is Angie Wannell, and I'm here as an Iowan, as a woman, and as a mother of three beautiful daughters. Over the last few years, Iowa has attempted a reasoned approach in response to the many problematic situations that have arisen from the consequences, including gender identity in the Civil Rights Code. The legislature has passed several bills to protect women's spaces, and I advocated for these bills after my own daughter experienced a biological male in the high school restroom. But in the end, all of these current and future laws are in for whatever will be in jeopardy of being struck down by the Iowa Supreme Court because gender identity is included in this code. This approach is not working. The real problem is that this law is not based on reality. It defies the law of nature and nature's God. Any law not rooted in objective truth is an unjust law. It is a law based on the ever-changing whims of human desire. It is untenable, it is at odds with the truth, and it cannot stand. You cannot, you can include gender identity in the Civil Rights Code, or you can include women, but you cannot include both. I've never identified as a feminist, but I am now an avowed women's rights advocate. I never thought I would live to see biological men work to categorically erase women and invade the spaces we have worked decades to protect. And not only are biological men masquerading as women working to erase us, but also so-called Republicans. To any Republican legislator working against this bill, I would like to remind you that removing gender identity from the Civil Rights Code is part of the Iowa Republican platform. You were elected to advance these priorities. I promise you, this issue is not going away. As the saying goes, "Hell hath no fury like a woman scorned," and there are thousands of us. Your vote will not go unnoticed. Choose wisely. Please support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Keaton Crowe, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, except for transgender people. Representatives, this bill makes a mockery of both our pledge and our state motto. It is not justice to deny someone shelter simply because they are a transgender person. It is not justice to deny them a car loan, life insurance, a credit card, simply because they are transgender. It is not justice to fire someone, a model employee, simply because it is discovered that they are transgender. That is not justice. This bill is not about sports. You will not see anything about sports or athletics in the entire bill. It is about access to justice or lack thereof. And we can say, "Oh, yes, maybe twenty other some states are not doing this protection, and so that's just, right?" No. Let's read our history books. In 1868, Plessy versus Ferguson enacted nearly sixty years of injustice across the country, and state after state had to choose whether or not separate was actually equal. And Iowa was the first, the first state, to say that separate is not equal. And yet, here we stand, over a hundred and fifty years later, enshrining those very words into Iowa code, "Separate but equal." That is shameful. I ask you to reject this legislation and hold true the promise in both our pledge and our state motto, "Our liberties we prize, and our rights we will maintain."
Go ahead.
Thank you. I am Tamara Scott. I'm the State Director of Concerned Women for America, the largest women's public policy organization in the nation. And Phyllis Shafley Eagles, as well as Valor Iowa, stand with us in support of this bill to restore the Iowa Civil Rights Code to the 2006 language before gender identity was added and the bill was weaponized, pitting Iowa against Iowan. Since that time, Iowans have faced harassment, employees and coworkers, students live in fear, move in fear, and even Iowa business owners have lost their livelihoods. Right here in this building since Monday, those who have testified in support of this bill have been threatened in their vocations as college professors, those on the school board in their service, and on social media. It's a misuse of a privileged class. Even more, if gender identity remains in this code, the good work that this body has done protecting girls in sports, protecting students from confusing gender classroom curriculum, or even the hormonal treatments that create risk at young ages, or even mutilation of bodies, will be at greater risk in the courts of being lost as long as this gender identity is in our Iowa code. Even more, Princeton University or Research and Gender Research Center says that this particular group is ever-changing, it's fluid in identity, it's undefinable, and it's ever-expanding. How do you responsibly, as legislators, create a group with a protected status if you can't define it, if it's ever-changing, if it's ever-expanding? The manual on the 1887 anniversary of our Constitution reports that government is never to pit one group over the other or to give a few benefits that others don't have. That's what this GI, gender identity, does in our code. No one will lose a right, no one will lose the ability to get loans, but we'll all have the enabled rights endowed by our Creator, we'll have equality in the state once again. I thank you for taking up this bill, for standing with Iowans. It is not yours to codify feelings or falsehoods. It is yours to stand on facts.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Can I go?
Go ahead.
My name is Taylor Layden. I live in Urbendale, Iowa, and I'm here to ask you to protect the future of my twenty-month-old daughter, Eloise. Obviously, my daughter's not transgender. She does, however, have a genetic variance that would classify her as intersex, a term you may have heard but you may not understand. You see, when my daughter was about fourteen months old, she developed a hernia in her labia, and we discovered that she actually has testes and has a 46 XY karyotype. Externally, she appears completely female, but her internal sexual organs do not match. Eloise is a beautiful little human, and everyone who meets her just gushes about how perfect she is. She loves bows and knacks and cars, and she's a big fan of Lightning McQueen, who she calls Queen. She shows empathy for others in a way that I didn't realize was possible in such a tiny person. I am terrified about what the future may hold for my daughter due to things beyond her control. Because of her genetic variance and intersex traits, I don't know what gender Eloise will identify with when she gets older, and as much as I love having a baby girl, I will cherish and love and protect my child no matter how she identifies. I fear that the world will not be so accepting and loving. HF 583 weakens protections for intersex Iowans like Eloise. It makes it so that she would be unable to change the sex marker on her birth certificate if she ends up identifying as male, despite the fact that we had no idea that she had an XY chromosome when she was born. This bill sets a dangerous precedent for discrimination against anyone who doesn't fit into a gender binary. Everyone in this room is someone's child, just like Eloise is mine. Every intersex Iowan and transgender Iowan is also someone's child, someone's baby. Please don't make existing in this state any harder than it already is for people who are different from what is considered normal to exist in the world. Please vote against HF 583. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Good morning. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm Ray Simmons. I'm coming on my own. I am a retired Air Force pilot. I settled in Iowa eleven years ago and love it here. After the Air Force, I became a pastor and planted a new church in Red Oak, and I'm a father of five girls. I stand in support of the bill because our current civil code, our civil rights code does not fit, and it doesn't fit in three ways. First of all, it does not fit our culture or ethics. Almost all the families in my church moved in, they moved from all over the country, from the West Coast, and they came to Iowa because it's a good place for a family, because of the values. These are professionals, engineers, machinists. Iowa's bringing in families that want a good place to raise their children for the long term. Based on the recent election, Iowans out there, like in my county, would want you to pass this bill because our current code does not fit the election mandate. And as a side note, I saw a listing of all the lobbyists that are in favor of this and opposed to this, and most are opposed. And that says to me that I think the lobbyists are a little out of sync with Iowa. I would recommend listening to your constituents. Secondly, our code does not fit, our current code does not fit with the rest of the code. God would have us to make codes that are consistent, and protecting children, upholding religious freedoms, are those types of things. And third, our current code does not fit Scripture. I think that the identity is rooted in the Creator. We will see this, but one thing that you will notice in that verse is that it designates male and female.
Time, sir.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I'm Connie Ryan, Executive Director of Interfaith Alliance of Iowa. We are registered opposed to the legislation which is consistent with most Iowans. In 2007, as part of a broad coalition, Interfaith Alliance of Iowa amplified voices of people of faith and no faith from across Iowa to add sexual orientation and gender identity into the Iowa Civil Rights Act. Christians, Jews, Muslims, Sikhs, Unitarian Universalists, and more. As part of the broad coalition, Christians advocated for and helped ensure passage of 2007, in 2007. Christians who read the King James Bible, and those who prefer the new revised standard. Christians who attend Mass daily, and those who worship only on Christmas and Easter. My point is, including gender identity in the Iowa Civil Rights Act was and continues to be widely supported by most people of faith in our state, including a broad spectrum of Christians. The religious right is not the voice of all Christians, not even the majority. The inclusion of gender identity in the Iowa Civil Rights Act is eighteen years of precedence, eighteen years of providing important protections for our neighbors and family, eighteen years of Iowans who are transgender knowing that their beloved state has their backs. Iowans who are transgender knowing that their beloved state has their backs. This bill is immoral. It is harmful. No one should have their civil rights taken away from them, taken away civil rights protections and rewarding. A small but vocal minority that chooses discrimination over civil rights of their neighbors is wrong. To the legislators who want to vote no, but have been threatened by those with real or perceived power, be strong, be brave. Iowans are with you. Iowans know you know what is right and what is moral. Do not erase the civil rights of transgender Iowans who are your neighbors. We are begging you to do the right thing. Stand with your morals, stand with the majority of Iowans, stand on the side of protecting civil rights for Iowans who are transgender. Please, vote no on this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Hold on just a minute.
Thank you for the time to speak to you. My name is Chris Hay. I was born and raised here in the Des Moines area, still live and work here. I am a father of two, one daughter and one son. I have five grandchildren. Three of them are granddaughters. One of my concerns, and only going to address one because of time constraints, one of my concerns for my granddaughters is that they will not end up like my daughter did in a coed dorm, screaming at the top of her lungs, fighting off an attack from a rapist. I don't agree with this. It was really hard for me to listen to that story, my daughter recount that. I don't want that for my granddaughters. I believe that we should follow the tradition that our fathers and our grandfathers held. There are two genders, there's a reason for that. God states that in the Bible, and I'm thankful for that. So I think if we would pass this bill that I am in support of, we would not be leaving the door open for these types of incidents to incur with our children and our grandchildren. My mom had a saying, "It's better to be safe than sorry," and that's stuck with me, and I would just like to leave you guys with that. Thank you for the time for allowing me to speak. Please pass this bill.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Hello. My name is Kat Power, and I am an educator in the Linmar Community School District. I took a mental health day to bring one of my students that turned 18 today. I am here to oppose House File 583, as it will strip his rights. I became a teacher because I believe helping kids succeed to the best of their abilities is one of the most important contributions I can make. I also became the faculty sponsor for Linmar's Gay-Straight Alliance Club because I believe LGBTQ plus students deserve to have a safe space within their school. Students come into my classroom and into my club from different backgrounds, abilities, and identities. They want the same thing, to be treated with respect and dignity in a safe place where they can learn, grow, and thrive. In 2007, our Iowa legislators believed that including protections for gender identity was necessary and would improve our state's ability to stop harmful practices targeted at some. This expansion has stood for almost 20 years with no adverse consequences to other Iowa citizens, so why scale back now? Rights for All People does not take away rights from other groups. The arguments you have read and heard today and in the past about God, only two genders, moral rightness, locker rooms and bathrooms, truly has nothing to do with this bill. Denying people dignity, respect, healthcare, and safety in their community, employment, and living situations is the focus of this bill. You do not have to like someone to know that they deserve just as much protection and rights as you do. Why deny people these protections? Do legislators and governors know that transgender kids are more at risk for suicide, homelessness, and discrimination today? Do they care that my students will live in a state that puts politics over their health and safety? People's rights should not be a bipartisan debate. It should be common sense that all people, and I repeat, all people, deserve civil protection in every aspect of their lives. I will never stop.
Thank you. Time, thank you. Hold on just a minute.
Thank you. I'm representing, listening for the opportunity to testify here today. My name is Gray Baker. I'm with the Church Ambassador Network. I'm here in support of the legislation today. As all of you, I'm a strong supporter of the Iowa Civil Rights Act, and I'm thankful this body voted for that act in 1965. As a Christian, I believe all people are created in the image of God, including creating us male and female, and all people are valued by Him, proven by His work on the cross. Also, as a Christian, I know that it's not only in Him, it's only in Him that we can find our true identity. To search for identity, other places will find us endlessly searching, and we most certainly see this in our world today. Our, the Civil Rights Act, is to protect the image in which God created us in, which I fully support. The complexity of this truth is that each of us was also born with a sinful nature, creating a contention of each and every single one of us in who we truly are as people. I know not all Iowans agree with me in the teachings of the Bible. I personally have chosen to subject myself, my own beliefs, to what the Word of God teaches. However, when it does come to adding gender identity to the Civil Rights Code, this does cause a tension amongst Iowans, which we're feeling here in this room today. For example, what do we do with public accommodations when a male identifies as a female and desires to use the female public restroom? Or what procedures should Medicaid be covering and not be covering at taxpayers' expense? It's this tension that leads me to support this legislation today. Many legal protections will continue to remain in place and will protect all Iowans, including those in opposition today. And yes, each of you do belong in Iowa, regardless of who you are here and how you view our Civil Rights Code, and I'm thankful you are here. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Cade Martin, and today I speak not just for myself, but for many other transgender youths in Iowa. I was born on February 27, 2007. Today is my 18th birthday. I stand before you fighting for the same basic civil rights that every Iowan deserves by humanely asking you to vote against this bill. It deeply troubles me that after 18 years of living here with my family, attending school, working, this is the focus of our state. I plan on attending the University of Northern Iowa in the fall, and I hope that to live independently without fear of discrimination simply because of who I am. I have heard some people talk about women's rights. With that, I ask you all, why do women's rights only seem to be defended when it is used to be against the transgender community? That wears the same outcry when it comes to women's choices and their own bodily autonomy. I was raised with Christian beliefs. I believe that faith teaches us all to respect and love all people regardless of identity as a whole. A good Christian knows that only the Lord is one to judge. Nobody knows the Heavenly Father's plan. I believe our experiences in life, who choose who we are as people, is it not a sin to judge? As it is written in Romans 2, verse 1, "You therefore have no excuse. You who pass judgment unto someone else for whatever point you judge another, you are condemning yourself because you who pass judgment do the same things. It is those who do not love thy neighbor that receive judgment from the Lord, as all sins are equal and can be forgiven." I want to be able to be the person I was meant to be and as the person that God knows me to be. Please don't take my rights away simply because you disagree with who I am. Being trans is not a choice, it is a reality that you come to when you learn to understand yourself and love yourself, and I hope for those who refuse to try to understand that we can agree to disagree like civil people, instead of targeting each other from whatever background we may come from, and avoid becoming more divided as a state. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Last warning. The next time you applaud and interrupt this proceeding, you will be escorted from the room. Last warning, okay? Yes, sir.
Hello. My name is Brad Lawson. I'm here on my own behalf, and I support this bill. The reality of this bill is not removing gender identity, but restoring the rights and protections for our wives, mothers, and especially our daughters, and that is why I'm here today. I ask you guys to be bold and pass this through to let the country know that we in Iowa support women and believe in science, believe in sex, and not gender identity. Bring Iowa back to the foundation that's rooted in the God-given principles of sex and not gender identity, that we are male and female. As a husband to an immigrant and a father of two biracial young girls that don't get to choose the color of their skin, I understand the importance of civil rights protections. I struggle with the conversations I would need to have with my girls about boys in bathrooms with them, about boys competing against them in sports, and teachers telling and educating them that girls aren't only girls, but can be boys. The confusion that we're pushing on our next generation has to stop, and you have the ability to with this bill by eliminating this being taught in our educational system. Gender identity is a choice that is based on feelings and not facts. The way someone feels today or tomorrow doesn't get privileged protections over our mothers, our wives, and our daughters. As long as gender identity has civil rights protections, we don't have protections for women. It doesn't matter what other bills you try to pass saying you protect biological women, as long as gender identity has civil rights protections, every current and future bill protecting women will be overturned in court. You cannot have both, and passing this bill ensures the women and the girls of Iowa will be protected. Returning Iowa back to what has always been known since the beginning of time, a foundation that is rooted in the God-given principles of sex, when God said in Genesis 1:27, "So He created mankind in His own image. In the image of God He created them, male and female." God calls us to love our neighbors, and love our neighbors enough to have truth, that God's design was male and female, confirmed by science through God's design of sex with XX and XY chromosomes. Protect our women and girls, and bring Iowa back to the foundation.
Time, thank you. Go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Joe Stutler. I am a decorated disabled combat veteran, born and raised in the city of American history. I am without a doubt the most senior patriot here today. I served two tours of duty in Germany. I've toured concentration camps. I learned a few things. Consider Niemöller's poem, "First They Came." You've said, "Screw these hungry kids." You've continued to attack public education and educators. You're gunning for trade unionists, gutting Chapter 20. You're trying to criminalize religions you don't like. Today, you're trying to dehumanize my family and my friends. You're doing the Nazi stuff again. Today, instead of doing your job and telling our school districts what they have to work with so they can plan their budgets, we're here to discuss your perverted obsessions with other people's genitalia. It's interesting that the only speakers so far in favor of this abomination of the bill are theofascists whose deity could have banned slavery, but instead it banned pork. And yet I don't see you out protesting at hog farms. Others have and will tell you how your reducing of women into having functional ovaries else they don't matter is disgusting. I'm here to remind you that Nazis are never the good guys. I'm here to remind you that while at the moment you're giddy with power, as your analogues were in the 1930s, in your end, you're going to end up just like they did, and given our technological advances and the good kids that are studying STEAM, I don't think it's going to take 10 years to eradicate the Nazis this time. While I'm too old to be a foot soldier in the upcoming war that you're demanding, I'm happy to share the skills that Uncle taught me with those who will be taking advantage of our lack of firearms regulations and the availability of resources at our big-box stores and home improvement centers. After all, Uncle made me an instructor of such things.
Excuse me.
Keep doing your Nazi stuff.
Excuse me.
Foxtrot Alpha, Foxtrot Oscar.
You're done. You just made physical threats. You're done. You're done. You're done.
My name is Ashley Novak. If I'm honest, I almost didn't come today, not because I don't believe that the issues that this bill seeks to address are important, but because I was afraid to sit here and speak in front of a crowd of people, many of whom I knew would disagree with me. I knew that to stand up for the truth, that a biological male cannot become a female, and that a biological female cannot become a male, would most certainly lay me open to anger, mockery, and misrepresentation. But as I thought about it, I realized that I could not in good conscience keep silent. It was not enough for me to believe inwardly that the issues presented in this bill were right, or to speak of them only with the people closest to me. I needed to have courage. We cannot be afraid to stand up for truth and common sense. We need to protect our children from indoctrination in our schools. Women and girls need to have safe spaces free from men pretending to be women. In this country, we have the freedom to dress and present ourselves as we wish, but we do not have the right to force others to affirm our decisions. That is why I'm asking you not to let fear be the stumbling block. Do what is right and vote yes. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Hello. My name is Gemma Bollock. I use they/them pronouns. I was born and raised here in Iowa. I am here as the Executive Director of Iowa Queer Student Alliance, as a college student attending Iowa State University, and as a young person who desperately wants to see the state that I love live up to its promise to be a place where every person has the inalienable right to pursue and obtain safety and happiness. I know you will hear firsthand from trans Iowans about how this bill will forever alter their lives, and nothing I say will be more real than those people's lived experiences. However, I am here to make you understand the ramifications on young Iowans. I've had countless conversations with students, and the thing that I hear most is that once they are done with school, whether it is one of the regency universities or a trade school, they will be leaving Iowa. This sentiment is reflected in the 2024 workforce development data, showing that percentage of students who plan to leave the state after graduation rose from 26.7% in 2017 to 38% in 2024. The percentage of students planning on staying also decreased in that time period from 46 to 40.8. This sentiment is shared between so many students, but queer students overwhelmingly agree, we cannot live in Iowa much longer. I will not stand for the alienation, the outcast of anybody, especially not my fellow queer Iowans. Whether or not you pass this bill, we will exist. We will continue to be queer. But know that if you pass this bill, young Iowans will resent you and leave the state for you have left us no option. You are trying to create an environment in which we have to fight to survive. The idea of thriving is not even an option anymore. Our state should be a perfect location for young people to start a career, start a family, and thrive. Instead, our legislators, you, are making it clear to young Iowans that everyone is not welcome in our state. This bill will only encourage more Iowans to leave. I challenge each and every person in this room to stop trying to pass legislation that does nothing more than make discrimination legal and focus on policy and laws that will turn the tide.
Time.
Thank you for your time.
Could you, I'm sorry, I did not catch your name.
Gemma Bollock.
Thank you. Okay.
Hi. My name's Shelley Flockhart, and I'm here speaking as a woman and a mother. I'm here not only as a defender of women's rights, but as someone who believes in truth of God's creation. Genesis 1:27, "God created mankind in His own image, male and female. He created them." This truth guides our families, our faith, and our society, and has for generations. Yet today, women's safety and safe spaces are under threat. We are told that biological men should allow these spaces, should be allowed in these spaces simply because they identify as a woman, but identity does not change biology. Women and girls deserve safety, privacy, and fairness. Jesus Himself protected women, uplifted them, and valued their dignity. He did not erase them. We are, as Christians, were called to love our neighbors, but love does not mean denying reality. It does not mean allowing policies that put our daughters at risk in their schools or force them to compete in sports against biological males. Iowa has always stood for faith, family, and fairness. We must stand strong now. I urge our leaders to uphold policies that protect women's spaces because standing for truth is not hateful. Let us protect the dignity of a woman as God intended. Thank you, and I'm asking for protection.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I want to tell you about a girl named Skylar who was born in Waverly.
I'm sorry, could you identify yourself and then start, we'll start your time over. If you could just tell us your name.
Yep. My name is Skylar Ramsey. I want to tell you a story about a girl named Skylar who was born in Waverly. I want to tell you a story about a girl named Skylar who was born in Waverly, Iowa. Her family struggled with poverty, and life was not kind. She spent first grade in Iowa City's Children's Hospital, not knowing if her younger sister Callie would ever wake from a coma. Skylar's family moved to Clarksville after second grade, only to lose everything in third when the floodwaters came. They relocated to Janesville, the third home and school district, in three consecutive years, and she got a job at 14 to support her family. Skylar devoted her life to the community. She's active in church, volunteers, and always offers a helping hand to anyone in need. Skylar was valedictorian, the first in her family to go to college, graduating from U&amp;I, and works her dream job, supporting Iowa's entire nonprofit sector. She met a great man, got married, bought a house, started a business, and dreams of raising a family in the Iowa communities that raised her. At what point did Skylar, did I, no longer become human to you? This is my life, my story. My name is Skylar, and my pronouns are they/them. Am I no longer worthy of rights and protection? Dozens of Christian denominations fully stand behind me as a trans Christian in Iowa. If you disagree, does your faith compel you to cast me out or harm me solely because of my gender? Sharing my story comes with severe risk to my safety and potentially my life from those unwilling to learn how my two- and four-year-old nieces scream "Sky!" every time they run to get a hug from me on the weekends, or how I rather unsuccessfully tried to race my goofy Labradors. To the allies, your time to stand up and speak out is now. If you are a safe person, business, landlord, employer, we need to know. If this becomes law, you are our only hope of remaining in Iowa safely. Your solidarity reduces the risk we boldly accept every single day. I never know if today is the day when someone fears my existence, my story so much that they are willing to end it. Do not let us stand alone.
My name is Oliver Bardwell. I'm with Iowans for Freedom. I'm a father and a grandfather. Truth is not hatred. Truth is not bigotry. Truth is compassion. And the truth is biological reality matters. The people of Iowa understand this, and it's time for our laws to reflect it. When gender identity was added to the Iowa Civil Rights Code in 2007, no one imagined we'd be here. Where biological men are allowed in women's bathrooms and locker rooms, women are silenced for demanding privacy. Laws protecting women and children are undermined by the activists weaponizing the Iowa Civil Rights Code. HF 583 corrects this mistake. It restores the definition of biological sex in law. It protects women's rights and spaces and parental rights. It ensures gender ideology cannot erase biological reality. We've already passed laws to protect bathrooms and locker rooms, remove gender identity instruction from public schools, ban harmful cross-sex hormones, and mutilation surgeries for minors, and protect girls' sports from biological males. Yet activists are still forcing institutions to comply with this radical gender ideology. I recently interviewed a mother and daughter who left Whorfburg College because a biological male was allowed to shower in the women's dorms. The school's excuse? Gender identity is in the Iowa Civil Rights Code. Another mother fought for her daughter's privacy at DMAC, and she was told, "Your daughter's rights are not being violated. The other student's rights would be." And this other student was a 40-year-old naked biological male, standing in her changing room when she walked in. We hear about rights, but whose rights are actually being violated? Who's actually losing their rights? Women.
Time.
Their privacy.
Thank you.
God bless you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sandra Mariegan. I'm a mom to a wonderful 12-year-old daughter, and I'm a senior at Iowa State University with plans to work in clinical psychotherapy. I'm a wife. I own a home. I pay taxes, and I'm also a transgender woman. Being transgender is just an explanation for how my humanity is expressed. However, the bill in front of us wants us to reduce that humanity, lock it up and shut it down, simply because my heart, mind, body, and soul refuse to live a lie about my truth. I am exhausted from having to defend my right to exist. The first three months of every year, I live in terror of what my state leaders will do to me this time. I have been here before. I have spoken here before, and I have asked you all to learn about us and stop being afraid of what you don't understand. If you can join the right side of history and truly align with moral conscience, those hearts can be moved from my words and others. Vote no against this legislation, then connect with us and learn how we can manage our intersectionality. Because while I'm transgender, I'm just a human who deserves all equal rights and access that anyone else does. Please vote no on this bill and protect my right to exist. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mandy Shivers, and I am here to speak in support of House File 583. I'm coming before you today as a mother, a homesteader, a sexual health educator, a birth provider, a sister, a wife, a mother, and a daughter of a king. These are the things I identify myself as. However, for my gender, I am a woman. As an educator, I've spent many hours explaining how the male and female bodies work. So many hours, I've actually written curriculum for slaves being freed from the kilns in Pakistan. When it comes down to it, it's very easy to teach what the male and female bodies do and what they were created for. To reproduce, you must take one individual that was born a male and take one individual that was born a female, and together, they create new life, just one man and one woman, very simply, two genders. When I am educating, I will speak the truth and be consistent, whether that is on sexual health, birth processes, or homesteading, because speaking truth is the most loving thing I can do for someone. My identity has changed many times in my life. It is a very fluid thing. I have identified as a rebel, tomboy, gypsy traveler, and when I was young, I would have identified as a police officer, a bank robber, a cowboy, a dancer, or a daddy in our pretend games. But you see, the only thing that has been solid and never changed is my gender. I cannot use my identities that I resonate with to classify myself on a legal document. The only thing I can use is my one, never-changing, born-at-birth gender, woman. I am a woman born and raised, and nothing can change that. How I feel is not fact. My feelings are not to be trusted, as they are fluid. I would ask, ladies and gentlemen of the House, that you pass this legislation on facts and objective truths, not fluid identities. We are adults, and it's our job to protect children and set a foundation for the next generations. Identifying objective truth and biological design of the body by God is an easy place to start. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hello, my name is Megan Kohizer. I'm originally from Mulkey, currently residing in Des Moines, and I am asking you to oppose this bill. I remember growing up in Iowa, being proud of what a progressive, safe state we were. We were the leaders in desegregating schools, 1862, 100 years before the rest of the country, and in legalizing gay marriage in 2009. But now, things are changing. Gone is the Iowa I was once proud of. Now, it festers and rots with hate. I see my fellow citizens on a witch hunt. "We need to protect women in public restrooms," they say. Sexual assaults in public restrooms are so statistically insignificant, I can't find any numbers regarding how often it happens. You're far more at risk in your own home with a man you thought you could trust, as all five of my assaults have occurred starting at the age of three. But what about sports? Hormone replacement therapy causes a loss of muscle tone and volume, giving trans women a disadvantage against other women. More transgender women lose at sports against biological women than win, but that doesn't make the news because it's not sensational. If you vote for the leopards eating people's faces party, don't be surprised if the leopards
Go ahead.
Chuck Hurley, Family Leader, in favor. Thanks for bringing this common sense bill. I'd like to start with a prayer. Father, thank you for creating us just the way you did. We ask you to restore your truth, justice, and righteousness, and help us love you and our neighbors. In Jesus's name, amen. I'm testifying in three capacities: one, on behalf of my client; two, as a lawyer; and three, personally, as a taxpayer, neighbor, husband, father, and grandfather. I represented my same client 18 years ago when gender identity was first added to Chapter 216. We said then that it was a bad idea, and were preparing ads against it when Iowa's leading political adviser said, "Chuck, you're right. It'll allow males into girls' bathrooms, sports, et cetera, but almost no one will believe you." Well, now we know. It's past time to repeal this nonsense. Two, as a lawyer, I've followed the Medicaid Supreme Court case and have seen that because of gender identity in Chapter 216, we Iowans are forced to pay several million dollars for permanent sterilizations of previously healthy Iowans through genital mutilation and misapplied hormones, which then require ongoing medical costs. Three, as a taxpayer, I'm outraged to have to pay for that junk medicine. As a neighbor, I'm saddened by the tragedy of forever cutting off any hope of those Iowans having biological children or grandchildren and so on. And finally, as a spouse, parent, and grandparent of 19 females, I'm outraged that biological males have a legal right in Iowa to force themselves into my wife's, daughter's, and granddaughter's private spaces. Men, it's time we stand up for our girls and women.
Thank you. Go ahead.
My name is Izzy Fagan. I'm a 23-year-old trans person, and I'm here to demand that you vote against House File 583. Our liberties we prize and our rights we will maintain. Does this sound familiar to you? It should, because it is our motto and you see it every day on our state flag. Yet, as these words fly above you, steps are taken to do the exact opposite. Since we want to get into numbers, there were 11,447 incidents of single-bias hate crimes involving over 13,000 victims in 2024, as reported by the FBI. This number is only going to increase should this bill pass, and it is going to most harm an already marginalized community. In Arizona, just this last week, there was an instance of a cisgender, or biological, woman who was nearly arrested for trying to use the bathroom due to a new hostile piece of legislation over there. To move this closer to home, Sam Nordquist, who was a 24-year-old trans man from Minnesota, was tortured from December 2024 to February 2025, succumbing to his injuries on February 13th, which was just 14 days before this hearing. Passing this legislation is a disrespect to his memory and will lead to a slippery slope where the most vulnerable will fall. In conclusion, I, as a proud trans Iowan, demand that you oppose House File 583 and keep us alive. Thank you for your time.
Hello, I'm John Thompson. I encourage you guys to pass this bill. As a combat veteran who has given blood on two different foreign countries, one of the big things I've heard this week is this is unconstitutional. It is not. Everyone's rights are still protected, but it gives a group where they are equal to everyone else, not more. As a father of two beautiful little girls and a husband, I stand with protecting them, as well as one thing I have heard all week is biblical has been used on both sides. If you actually read the Bible front to back, which I have, as it saved my life when I came home from overseas, it states numerous times that it is a sin. Love is love, though. I still love everyone struggling, but we are called, if you follow it, to bring people out of sin. The Bible needs to quit being used as arrows and misinterpreted. As a veteran and as a spouse and a loving father, I push for this bill for many reasons. I researched this all of last year, and this instance that's brought up of it never happens is a farce. It happens all the time across the United States of sexual assaults in bathrooms. Yes, there's correct that cis happens too, but that's just like domestic violence and everything else. You cannot legislate that unless you push for stricter laws. So with that, I encourage you to move forward and pass this bill with haste. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
My name is Dr. Maria Corona. I'm with the Iowa Coalition Against Domestic Violence. We support 22 local victim service organizations, including eight emergency shelters. They provide support services to domestic violence, sexual assault, human trafficking, child abuse, and families impacted by homicide across Iowa. Because of this bill, these agencies will be in direct conflict with federal law and grant obligations. And as a reminder, federal grants remain the largest source of funding for this work in Iowa. As a condition of receiving federal funding, agencies are required to provide access to accommodations and services and comply with nondiscrimination provisions in federal law under the Violence Against Women Act, the Fair Housing Act, and the Family Violence Prevention and Services Act. Sam Nordquist was just named. A transgender man was tortured for months and killed, and their body found in upstate New York a couple weeks ago. This bill will embolden hateful people to do the same here in our state. There is a correlation between states where anti-transgender legislation has been introduced and the highest numbers of deadly violence against transgender people. Removing protections to a group that already is subject to a high rate of harassment and violence in public does not protect anybody. It actually creates more victims. This bill undermines violence prevention efforts and public safety broadly, and again, it does not protect anyone from violence or make anyone safer. I ask that you reject this bill and vote no. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Hello, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. My name is Danny Carroll. I represent the Family Leader. We're in support of this legislation, and thank you for moving it forward. You know, Mr. Chair, people of Iowa are people of goodwill, fair-minded, tolerant, and accommodating. And that's probably what was behind this legislation back in 2007. Certainly, there were some political motivations. The homosexual community dumped a lot of money into the November '06 election, probably expected some results in the '07 session. But that doesn't necessarily mean that it was not well-intentioned and an effort to be accommodating. What's happened, though, in the intervening years, Mr. Chairman, is what often happens, unintended consequences. It probably was never envisioned that they were granting a right to use public areas designated for the opposite sex. It was probably not envisioned that there would be a right to a prison cell, a homeless shelter, or a hotel room that was designated for members of the opposite sex. Probably no one envisioned a right to free genital mutilation at taxpayer expense. They probably did not anticipate the legal complaints that would be filed against businesses because they believed sex is limited to a man and a woman, and they act accordingly. And finally, they probably didn't anticipate the level of legal complaints filed against an employer because they want to conduct their business according to the traditional understanding of male and female. There are still many rights that are retained, Mr. Chairman, all the rights and freedoms protected that we've always had, and we thank you.
Time. Thank you. Okay, at the end of this two minutes, it will be 11:00 a.m. This will be our final speaker. No, it's 11:00 a.m. when this speaker is done. So, go ahead. So, go ahead.
I'm Reverend Debbie Griffin, the proud pastor of Downtown Disciples, and I urge you to vote against this bill. Transgender Iowans are our neighbors, friends, children, family, and community members. They are my parishioners and leaders in my church, who I love and respect deeply. They are some of the most gifted, intelligent, kind, and faithful people that I am blessed to know. Perhaps you are familiar with the Rainbow Faith Coalition of Greater Des Moines that represents more than 20 queer-affirming Christian communities and thousands of Christians in the Des Moines area who are compelled by our faith to stand in solidarity, to defend the rights of trans and gender nonconforming Iowans. In addition to the RFC-affirming congregations, thousands more affirming Christians are in other parts of Iowa, and we are offended by the targeting of our transgender neighbors by this fear-based, politically motivated bill that would endanger people who are already vulnerable to bullying and discrimination. The Trevor Project reported of a 2024 study that anti-transgender laws like this one significantly increased incidence of past-year suicide attempts among transgender and non-binary youth by as much as 72%. We are talking about real people, real Iowans. For people of faith, this issue is clear, or it should be. We are called to treat and love one another as ourselves. The Apostle Paul said to the Christians in Galatia, "There is no longer Jew or Gentile, oppressed, or free, male or female, for we are all one in Christ."
Time. Thank you. It is exactly 11:00 a.m. Thank you all for coming. The public hearing is concluded.